January 25th, 2011, we will proceed with our first agenda item, which is a presentation. Mr. Blackmer.
Where's the microphone?
Uh-oh.
I can project my voice, but I know they won't be able to hear me at home.
Let's come over here. Just, yeah.
There you go. Oh, here comes Herb. That's his far side chat with Dave Blackmer.
Thank you, Herb.
Thank you, Herb. I appreciate it. Well, actually, I have some guests here this evening, and we're very excited to have them here. And I'm not going to do any introductions. I'm gonna let Janelle Carney, one of our math teachers and math specialists, do those introductions. So please come on down, Janelle.
Thank you. In early December, I received a letter from the Woodlands Academy. As you may or may not know, they just opened a new science center for women, and they invited us to bring three students to compete in what they're calling a Mathalon. And the Mathalon took place last Saturday. And we were, it's for girls only, fifth or sixth grade, and I just happened to have exactly three girls in my sixth grade class. So I selected them and got them together to see if there was any interest. All three were very excited and very ambitious, and they were gonna bring home a trophy for the school, and they did just that. Eileen Brady, you girls wanna come up here, and Callan Herman, and unfortunately Katie Slaughter had a prior commitment and could not be here with us tonight. But they competed in seven or eight events. Two of them were reward challenges, and they won both of the reward challenges. They had to estimate how many M&amp;M's were inside of a jar, and they were about 34 off, and we are now the proud owners of over 2,000 M&amp;M's in our mathematics classroom. They also had to estimate how many books were in the library at Woodlands Academy, and they won that reward challenge as well. And for that, they won a gift card to Barnes &amp; Noble, maybe Borders, I'm not sure off the top of my head, so that we could purchase a book for the library. So we are working with our librarian, Mrs. Soulay, to find a math-appropriate book that the girls will have some input for, and I hope to put a little plaque inside that just says it's donated by the three of them. Callan and Eileen have brought the trophy to show you. Thank you, Mr. Blackmer, for bringing it from the middle school. And I asked them just to maybe tell you about one or two of their favorite challenges, so you could see that it was a very atypical math competition. There was very little paper and pencil involved, and they had a lot of fun. It was really fun to be there watching them compete. Callan?
Thank you. This is Carney.
You're welcome.
Eileen would like to talk about our first activity.
Here you are.
So for our first activity that we did, we were told to pick a describer and two drawers. So I was the describer, and Callan and Katie were the drawers. And I had a geometrical shape in a folder that I had to describe to them, and they couldn't ask me any questions. So I had to describe it.
And tell her what, tell them what the judge said.
Oh, and the judge said that we were the only team that they gave the highest score to.
All right.
Another one of the activities that we did was called "I Walked the Line," and they had this motion detector that they plugged into a calculator, and you had to, there was a graph that we were trying to make on the graphing calculator by doing walking, that certain graph with the motion detector. So it was really interesting because we had to know the different variables of the graph, so there was time and distance. And so we got through three of the graphs, and we were stumped by the fourth. And we were looking at the line, and it went up like that and back down and up. And so we kept, we spent like five minutes trying to figure out what to do until finally someone figured out that you can't go back in time on a graph. So then we figured out all four of them, and we got 2.5 for each. So that was nice. It was really fun.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. Say what you want to say.
It was very fun.
It was. Every time, I wasn't allowed to travel with them, so I kind of had to wait. But I did get to watch another event that was quite fun where they were given, they'd stand behind a line, and there was a table in the middle of the room, and they were given several different kinds of shoes. And they had to put a shoe on their foot and fling it onto the table, which when you start to think about, you're like, math? What's the math in there? But then I started hearing them say things like, well, a flip-flop doesn't really have a lot of substance to it, so it's gonna go, you know, all over the place, and that boot might be a little heavier, but it's harder to get on your foot. So it was, I was so happy that I got to see that particular event because I could hear the conversations, and these three girls worked together fabulously in my classroom every day. So it was kind of neat to just kinda see them in action. I also wanna say we did absolutely no preparation, and we still took home a third-place trophy.
Great job.
So congratulations, and thank you for having us.
Can I just stuff this in here?
Callan and Eileen, great job on both your competition on Saturday and your presentation here tonight. We really appreciate it. Katie Slaughter, it's also important to remember that she was not able to be with us tonight, but was an equal contributing member to the team on Saturday. We're proud of all three of them, and I was just over the moon to hear about the third-place finish. And we're gonna proudly display the trophy in our trophy case. And if I cross my fingers, can I have a few of those M&amp;M's that you brought home? Thank you very much. Thank you for giving us the time tonight. Appreciate it.
Great job, girls.
Congratulations.
Thank you all. All right, next will be any communication and questions from visitors. Okay, there being none, we will now move on to reports. Kate, if we could have you give the PTO report?
Hello. So this month, I wanted to let you know that on February 3rd, 7 o'clock at the middle school, the PTO, along with LEED, is bringing the Film Race to Nowhere to be shown. And actually, the tickets are all sold out, but we are trying to keep a wait list in case we have people that turn in their tickets, that already have tickets and can't come. There are also two other showings in the area, and people can check the Race to Nowhere website to find those other locations if they were not able to come to our presentation. We also just put together a post-showing discussion panel on February 10th at 7:00 p.m., also at the middle school. We're going to have a discussion with this panel. Carly Jacks will be facilitating it for us. And there'll be a flyer and publicity about that soon to come. I wanna thank too Sharon Scott, who was a PTO member and a parent in our community that helped bring Race to Nowhere to Lake Bluff, and then also Karen Cunningham at LEED, who was instrumental in helping us get the licensing and the, just the whole process of allowing us to show it. Some other things with PTO, we are finally moving out of East this week and moving our PTO closet over to the district offices, and apparently not too soon, as I hear there's standing water in the closet.
Yeah, some areas.
Yeah. So that will hopefully be completed this week. Also, in January, we had Jim Gill come and do a presentation to our kindergartners, and that was well-received. On March 3rd, we have the Enrichment Program Mad Scientist also coming to the elementary. And February 11th is Wheel of Wisdom, I believe at the middle school, and then that will come to the elementary in March. We are in the midst of planning our big spring fundraiser. It's March 19th at the Lake Forest Sports Car. Our theme is "Watch Us Grow," and we really rely on the Lake Bluff community to make this event a success. So please check the PTO website, there's ways that you can donate auction items or any other ways that you can contribute. And a big thank you to Samina Wagner, Heather Kerr, and Jerry Garrity, our co-chairs on that. This week, we have the parent-teacher conferences, and the PTO is providing dinners to the teachers on the Thursday night of those. We have a basketball game this Friday between the elementary school teachers and the middle school teachers at 6:00 p.m., so everyone's invited to come out and watch that. I've also been asked to mention that kindergarten enrollment is February 1st. That's also on the website. Encourage people to spread the word about that. And then, if people would like to become part of the PTO, either at the elementary level, middle school, or district level, please refer to our website and contact the chairs at each of those. We would love to have people come join us. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Okay, we will move down to Dr. Hendrickson and the Student Services and Curriculum Report.
Thank you. Well, we had a busy month this month. Lots to report. First of all, just this morning, we had the second workshop for Six Traits Writing for middle school teachers, and Nate reports that the teachers were real excited. I got to see some of them over at West Campus. It was a combined St. Mary's, Lake Forest, and Lake Bluff initiative. Six Traits Writing is a way to assess writing and helps teachers develop lessons. It's a rubric primarily for how to assess, but it also helps us become better writers through knowing what is, what is good writing. So there's one more of these workshops coming up later this spring, and I was real excited that it went well. In addition today, the K-5 group got together to form a new committee, a writing committee, something that the elementary teachers had designated as an area in which they wanted to improve our instruction. And so we've begun something that I think will take through, through spring, maybe May, and hopefully some recommendations for change coming this summer to our writing program. So writing is a very difficult thing to instruct. There is not a whole lot of training out there for teachers to become writing instructors, whereas there's a ton of professional development opportunities for math and reading. This is an area that it's difficult to assess. It's so big, and there's so much creativity involved, and yet it is so important. So I'm real excited. We had a terrific group of representatives from K through 5 with Buffy Stauffer, Denise Salat, and Peggy Coutre. I said that wrong. Coutre? Thank you. Leading the initiative as our reading specialist. So it's gonna be a great, great group, and Katie was real involved in it too, which was nice, and Kathleen. So thank you to all of them. Katie and I sat with an author of an eco-friendly program that presented to Kate Slick and Eileen Sherhat, our Eco Club sponsors, and they're gonna do a little pilot coming up in late February, March. Might grow into something more. We were all kind of excited to look at this little bit of a curriculum that helps kids become eco-friendly, and thought it'd be a real nice match for Lake Bluff Elementary if, in fact, it goes well. So a pilot coming up in end of February, March. Janice Heigl came back and worked with our teachers on Number Corner, and continues to be very successful. And I will say that regarding bridges, the teachers in that pilot are very pleased with it. And Janice has said to them many times, the things that we're doing together, the strategies that I'm teaching, work equally as well with everyday math. So even if the district goes everyday math in another year and a half, don't be disappointed because these things will transfer. But there's a lot of excitement about bridges. John, Katie, Anne, and I talked about, you know, continuing it as planned, so the same teachers will be involved in the second year to make sure that the data we get is, has parity, and we're, you know, feeling like we have a real good understanding of what's gonna happen. Katie also talked about how the kids in 4th grade this year will transition to 5th grade next year and not be contained in one class that's doing the pilot, but be able to be spread across the classes because we can regroup for math in 5th grade. So we'll continue the pilot with integrity. We had the opportunity in the middle school in 8th grade to hear a Mandarin-speaking teacher, and she came and talked to the kids about Mandarin, taught them a little bit about China, its emerging importance in the world, and really showed them that Mandarin might not be as tough as they thought. The idea being that kids in Lake Bluff really haven't been exposed to Mandarin, and it is certainly a choice that is unique to Lake Forest High School. And we thought it might be nice if they knew a little bit more about it and wanted to switch. They'd had that opportunity. We also had a parent meeting a couple weeks ago, and only had five parents come, but they were very excited about this opportunity that Lake Forest High School offers us. So we were pleased to do that. Another initiative that John had gotten started on is a calendar committee for 2012-13. A little bit off, but we've already begun working. Lake Forest High School is busy working on their calendar, and we use that as the foundation for ours. And so in the month ahead, we'll probably bring something for your look and approval at some point, once you're pleased. And finally, quite a bit has been done on the 2020 initiative, the 2020 Vision, and Al and Mary Jane have been involved in the leadership of that and sat in our last full committee meeting and participated. And so I think Al would be a great one to report on 2020 Vision for us. So thank you.
Andy, I just have a couple of questions. How many teachers and what grade levels are piloting bridges?
Help me, Katie. Just 4th and 5th grade, 4, 5, and 5. And the teachers are?
Four.
Jan Romito, Tom Brown. Who else?
Marcy Lennox.
Marcy Lennox.
And Jill.
Jill Weinberg.
And Jill Weinberg. Thank you.
So one traditional 4th grade, two multi-age, and then one traditional 5th grade?
Correct.
Multi-age is regrouping for math, and so one of them teaches the 4th grade bridges, and one teaches the 5th grade bridges.
And based upon the conversation with the Mandarin, is there anything that we're going to be offering in the Lake Bluff Middle School next school year?
I think that's something that we might wanna explore as far as parent interest and maybe start, you know, a little committee to look at that. But I don't think we're looking at next year. I think we're considering 2012-13 for 6th grade as a possibility, depending on interest.
Did we have any students select Mandarin that we know of for going into the high school next year?
I heard from a few students that told me, as I visited the school, that they had chosen it, but I don't know for sure what the count is, if any.
My daughter was very excited that she didn't have to learn it out. What did she say? There's no, there's no verb tenses.
Right.
Something like that. She said, eh, this is an easy language. There's no verb tenses. I'm like, I think there's a lot of things we need to look into. But great enthusiasm by the 8th graders came out of that meeting. I had six girls in my car all just saying they're gonna take Mandarin. So she made a good impression on the kids, at least the group that was in my car. So we'll see.
Good. Thank you.
The 2020 Vision Project and 21st Century Learning Skills has a couple of major thrusts going on. One is the development of a framework, which was initiated by a tri-district committee, has come back to the three districts for some evaluation and suggestions, and is on its way back to the tri-district team at this point to incorporate those suggestions and then bring it back to the districts. And I believe that document will be coming to the board. I'm not sure exactly when. The framework essentially will give us some direction, basically, you know, where we're going as Lake Bluff, Lake Forest, down this road. Then, as I think, you know, I think I reported last month, that our district has chosen the self-directed learner as our initial focus for the first year of the 2020 Vision. And we've got whole faculty study groups, which basically means everyone's involved in one group or another studying this. And one of the specifics that they've developed to date have been a list of projects or what they're calling essential questions, both at the middle school and at the elementary school. I just picked one off of each of the lists because I don't think you want to hear me read the entire lists. But one from the elementary that struck me as especially interesting is how do we influence parents to help their children help themselves and become self-directed learners? So we need some parent education there. We don't need parents sitting their children down at home and saying, "You will be a self-directed learner." That's somewhat counterproductive to the whole idea of a self-directed learner. And then the one I picked out of middle school, being a middle school parent myself right now, that I thought, I just wrote on here, really good question. "What factors and influences most motivate middle school students to achieve?" And I think that's a really essential question at the middle school where motivation sometimes comes into question at that age. So I thought those were interesting. And then I asked several of the staff members to try and come up with some examples where the staff are already beginning to put self-directed learning into place, even though we're not too far down the road in defining. The staff are familiar with it. They're studying it, and some of our teachers have begun to take some new initiatives on this. And so I probably came up with more than we need to read here, but they've come up with several good ones. I've gotta get past these pages because they're the wrong pages. In one particular case, one of our, I think it was Todd Metaglia, actually surveyed his students to see what they thought a self-directed learner was. I don't know any of the results of that, but I'm sure he came up with some very interesting insights on that. A couple of the middle school teachers, while they've always allowed the stu, or asked the students to do goal-setting, it's my understanding, this year they actually shared the students' map data, and that map data was a part of that goal-setting to enhance that process of becoming self-directed. We have 5th grade students volunteering to meet during their lunch recess to learn more about their digital skills and to share those skills teaching other students. And so that's a student initiative that they're taking upon themselves to do. And then Marcia Croll, I believe for several years, has done a project, Citizen Project, which is very much in the vein of self-directed learner in 21st century. This year, she has added email to that process so that the students can, going through her, working through her in what Nate and Marcia felt was a safe way, but the students are allowed to send their own emails to these people that they're connecting with in the community and the public and receiving the response back, as opposed to everything having to go from student to teacher, teacher to person, back to teacher, back to student. So she's opened up that channel for some direct communication. So even though we may be very early in the process, we've got a number of teachers, and I'm sure there are many more examples if we were to really dig, teachers already beginning to implement some of what they're studying. So I thought that was pretty cool that we're moving down that road.
So Al, just one question. The framework that you're gonna present to the board next month, is that kind of, is that, is the idea behind that like a mission statement?
I don't think it's next month, to begin with. Andy probably, looks like he wants to say more here, so I'll let him.
No, I'm just curious what.
It's more of a guide.
Yeah, there's a lot of models out there, like National Education Technology Standards has a model for 21st Century Learning Partnership, for 21st Century Skills has a model, the rainbow you might have seen. So this, this group of three or four people from each of the districts got together and looked at just a plethora of these models and decided, you know what, this really is a need for our community. This is important for our community. Put those together and then started defining what it meant. What is global awareness? What is critical thinking? What is, you know, what are these things to us so that we would have common language? And then our, our group, the 20 of us in our 2020 Vision team, looked at those, broke them down, made some suggestions. That'll go back to the group to put together. The next point will be to bring it to each of the three boards, and then possibly to the tri, well, not possibly, then to the tri-district board. So as far as the timing, it might be next month, but this, this ad hoc group needs to get together still and work on it.
I know we saw those at the Joint Shared Service Meeting, you know, the models.
Yes.
Back in the fall.
Right.
As just, as all the choices that were out there. And I was just curious.
Yeah.
That was a piece of what we were discussing.
That's exactly what we're talking about.
So rather than adopt one model or everybody's model, the goal is to factor that down or develop from those and from our own learnings, what model is the best fit for Lake Bluff and Lake Forest?
And then is the next step sort of, in your role, I'm assuming that you then look at our curricular goals and learning outcomes and see where we're not, again, we're not adding on anything. I just don't want people out there to think we're adding on more. We're just looking at a way to approach the content.
Exactly.
In a way that makes sense for 21st Century Learning.
Exactly. So, for example, as we revise a writing curriculum, K-5, we'll be using this as one of the things that we refer to and say, well, does this provide more critical thinking? Because this is an area that we wanna increase. Does this do something with global awareness? Does this do something with creativity and these other strands that we have identified as important to Lake Bluff?
So it's, it's like a lens with, which we look to our own curriculum, and we may look at our curriculum, say, maybe some things in our curriculum are not necessary now that we look to 21st Century Learning.
Each time we do a revision, this is, this is a lens, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
And some of it is how we teach, not just what we teach. A good bit of it is how we teach.
Thank you, Andy.
Thanks.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you. Dr. Wirth, if we could have you go next?
Okay, thank you. We are continuing to work within form with, especially Patty Briggs and Lori Brown. We collaborated and problem-solved with Lake Forest 67 and 115 to try to make it a more seamless effort and unite in our questions and use each other's brain to have a more effective product that works for all of us. And I think, as Al noted, the use of data in the goal-setting is a great step in that. And we're gonna continue that work with especially the two people in our district to make sure they have time to do that in their days. We are also working with the Student Assistance Program Coordinator, and that is an effort led by LEED, who secured funding for that with a private donor matching funds. And our team is involved in the interviewing to make sure we have a good match with someone who'll work with the three school districts and the community partners in this. So that's kind of exciting, and will help us really get a united word out and make sure we're not missing any bases. The, Kate talked a little bit about the Race to Nowhere, and I wanna add that in, because we are full and have sold all our tickets, Kathleen did post on our website links to where parents can have options to view the movie. And even if they don't see it with us, they're invited to attend the discussion on February 10th to be involved in our community discussion about it and questions and answers. Also in emotional wellness, we are having Jonathan Mooney come to the middle school to talk to staff, or first students, and then it's an early dismissal day. He'll talk directly to all the staff, and in the evening, he'll be talking to parents at the Gorton Center. That's sponsored by the Learning Disability Association of Lake Forest and Lake Bluff, and we thank them for that. And information will be on our website and on the LDA website about that. That's January 23rd. He is an adult, an educated college professor with learning disabilities who struggled greatly in school, and he talks about goal-setting and problem-solving and working through difficulties, being successful ultimately. We had the public parent meeting regarding our special education program review on January 13th, and it was well-attended with the parent community. They had lots of great questions. We are in the process of putting on our websites, which should be on there by the end of the week, a call for parents to serve on this committee and help us explore the process and make the decisions. So check our website for that. We'll be doing another parent-public meeting early in March to follow up to the one in January. And I'm happy to say, our teachers and staff got $6,700 worth of grant money from the Learning Disability Association, and grants were written for technology, technology support, and innovation for classroom equipment, and for social-emotional support materials to use with students.
Thank you, Ann. Dr. Esplin, Superintendent Report.
Thank you. I have a few things. To build on, one of the things that Dr. Wirth was just talking about, the NSSED presentation that we gave on the 13th, the word has spread on that a little bit, and Jane and Anne and I will be meeting with the Lake Forest administrators to present this same information that we presented to the parents to the other NSSED superintendents who now want to see what it is we're doing, because they've gotten word that we're saving money, and they wanna know how we're doing it. And so there's, we've created some interest from a lot of those folks as well. So I guess, short way of saying, we've been somewhat of the trailblazers in this area, but now it's somewhat catching on. So that meeting is supposed to happen in mid-February. So that meeting is supposed to happen in mid-February. Heard a report last Friday from somebody who is a reporter in Springfield at our Lake County Superintendent's meeting that talked about the income tax increase and what that will mean for the state. It doesn't really change our school lives much or at all for Lake Bluff 65. The legislation was written in a way that should unless they change it, so it should prevent the legislature from taking that money and creating a lot of new programs. The budget can't grow more than 2% a year, and if it does, the income tax increases are immediately revoked, so that there is a huge incentive for the legislature to keep that money going towards paying down of debt, which is what it's supposed to do. And that was encouraging to hear. The proof is in the pudding, and we'll see how that ends up playing out. And the last thing I wanted to make you aware of was next week, February 2nd, we are doing a staff in-service on Strengths Finder. Every staff member has received the book, and they have until then to take the self-test and to get their results printed out. But we will be going through that same process with the staff starting next week that we did with the administrators in the fall. So trying to start slowly and build upon the idea of, once again, Corinne used the term of lens, this isn't extra work for the teachers, this should be a vehicle to have them see things in a different way and to look at possibilities rather than extra work. So bless you. We're very excited about that opportunity, and I'm greatly looking forward to that and for its interaction with a lot of the self-directed learning initiatives that we're taking on. I think this dovetails with it very well down the road. That's all, Ann.
Great, thank you. Okay. There is no president report this evening, so we will move on to standing committees. District Curriculum Committee?
Has been replaced by the 2020 Vision Team.
Thank you.
They've given a report.
Can we take that off the agenda, so I don't have to...
Absolutely.
Thank you. NSED, MJ.
You heard Ann say that we did have the meeting. The only thing that I would add is I'd like to thank Ann and the Special Services Directors from both 67 and 115. They did a very nice job of presenting. It was a well-attended meeting, I thought. There were a lot of good questions. They did a nice job, I thought, of answering questions. And I think, you know, heard some things that they want to evaluate going forward. Definitely want to involve some parents in the process, which was the plan anyway, but became a little bit solidified, I think, put a timeline on that. Also, all three districts sent their board member who is on the governing board for NSED. So each of us was there representing the boards who are on the governing board of NSED. So we sit in two places, on our own boards and also on that board. So I thought it was a very good meeting. I believe we decided there will be several more meetings going forward, so I thought it was a nice communication. So, the other thing, NSED did meet this month, and, you know, the calendar has been in kind of a state of flux, the idea being to get the budget to us board members and to our boards, our home boards, more quickly. We did this month see the first draft of the coming year's budget, which in general is last year's budget with a few changes that are known, but in general, that's what that is. It's a starting point. Thank you.
Okay. Finance and Facilities?
We did meet briefly on the 13th to discuss the placement of the mural that's in the east school in the elementary school, and intended, we believe, to fit best in the library. Some bookcases may have to be moved and some rearrangement, but Jane is now going out to bid to see what it's going to cost us to make the move. So that's where we stand.
I did meet with Chicago Conservation this past week, and they took a look about removing the mural, and we did look at the space in the library. It's going to be a really tight fit, so we've got to do a little more investigating to make sure it does fit. I did pose the question, Al, about encasing it, if there's a way to keep it weatherproofed that were on the outside of the building, and he was going to at least investigate that as an option. So more information to come.
Just to clarify, we're looking at moving that to the elementary school library.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes.
Shared Services, we did not have a meet. We're working on getting a meeting date. Strategic Plan, okay? Green Team?
Did not meet.
Social Committee?
Have not been very sociable.
Okay. Action Items, Personnel Recommendations.
I move that the Board of Education approves the personnel recommendations as per the attachment.
Second.
John, if you could give us a summary on those?
Sure. We have a leave of absence for Dan Witz, a language arts teacher at the middle school. We have a leave of absence, maternity leave, for Erica Bellina, a special education early childhood teacher at the elementary school. We want to employ Timothy Wolak as district maintenance worker, and we would like to employ Katherine Kreisel as drama teacher, long-term sub, effective January 3rd. Also employ Adriana Vukovich at the middle school as a long-term sub in language arts starting January 26th. We would like to move Ann Ryan from her position as aide and make her a long-term sub as a kindergarten teacher, taking the place of Mandy Noble, who's going on maternity leave effective February 14th, or of course, if she needs to go sooner. And then, because Ann will be vacating her aide position, we're asking to employ Melissa Pasquazee as a long-term sub as the classroom aide in that same classroom, starting February 14th as well.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions? Roll call vote, please.
Al Fifeos?
Yes.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Kim Burke?
Yes.
Terry Carney, yes.
Yes.
Al Fifeos?
Yes.
Okay. Next action item, Policy Approval.
I move that the Board of Education approves the revisions to policies, administrative procedures, and exhibits as per attached.
Second. Okay. These are the items that we looked at last month?
Nothing has been changed from last month.
Okay. Any other discussion? Can we do a voice vote?
Yes, no, sorry.
No? Okay, Terry roll call.
Corinne Torkelson?
Yes.
Terry Carney, yes. Kim Burke?
Yes.
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Al Fifeos?
Yes.
Okay. Next action item, Transportation Services. I move that the Board of Education gives approval for the administration to seek bids for regular transportation services, effective with the 2011-12 school year.
Second.
Okay. Someone could give us a second?
Yeah, we've been with Olson Transportation for six or seven years, and we've always bid that out with District 115. They have decided by virtue of receiving a letter, they have to bid it. So 115, 67, and 65 are going to join forces and bid out transportation for next year.
And historically, we've just bid with 115, not 67. So this...
Yes, they've always bid separate contracts, separate providers.
Okay.
So 67, 115. So we're bidding it out as all three districts together.
Great.
That's great.
Looking at cost savings, economies of scale.
We certainly anticipate cost savings by going out to bid right now and think that we'll get under current contract. Don't know that, but we feel pretty positive.
Jane, I know that our current start times are somewhat related to transportation schedules because of the sharing of vehicles. Is our start times possibly going to be influenced by this with three districts going together?
I don't, I don't think so. I think it'll benefit us, right now we're so dependent on buses coming from the high school and happen to... We actually added two buses to the middle school this year because they were routinely late. So I don't know that it's been a cost savings to bid it with just the high school.
Does this may give us more flexibility?
I think so, because, yeah, if we can get away from buses that have to finish the high school route before it starts our route, we benefit. And I think our bell times, we've discussed over the last couple of years with the new school, kind of are fitting our needs and our students as they are, so.
And I know we talked about fees for next school year. Did we already discuss transportation fees?
Yeah, we lowered them this year, and then next year, no changes.
Okay.
So there's a little price break if they register early. This past year, it was by July 15th, and then after that, the price increases a little bit. So we'll stick to the same type of schedule.
Okay. And are these contracts typically multi-year?
I haven't seen the bid documents yet, but I would, I would hope that they are multiple year.
Okay.
We do not want to change providers quickly, yeah. We've been very happy with Olson, so, you know, if they sharpen their pencil a little bit, maybe they'll be back.
Realistically, how many providers are there out there that could service the needs of three?
Any more, I don't, I can think of about three.
Okay.
Right off the top of my head, in this area. And particularly in this part of the world, in the bid specs, we want that provider to have a garage and their fleet really close by.
Right.
So we'll specify, I would think, within so many miles of the district they have to be located.
Okay. All right, Jane, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next action item, amend the 2011-2012 school calendar.
I move that the Board of Education approves the amended 2011-2012 school calendar as per the attachment.
Second.
Second.
John?
Okay. As I promised last month, I would come back with an amended calendar, and I would thank Dr. Henderson and the Calendar Committee and really all the district staff for putting their heads together on this one. Essentially, what we're looking at here is January 2nd as the originally approved calendar. It said we would be coming back to school Monday, January 2nd, 2012. Because that's a federal holiday, we are recommending that we put that in as a day of non-attendance, so that stretches our winter break from December 19th, Monday, December 19th, to Monday, January 2nd. And to make up that day, we would be starting school on a Friday, which originally sounds a little off, but as they explained their rationale to me, I thought it made perfect sense. To start school Monday, or I'm sorry, Friday, August 26th as a half-day, the rationale being, meet the teacher was already going to be during that week, and so parents would already be around to have their kids here to meet the teacher, and so if we start school on that Friday where we weren't going to start until Monday, we really shouldn't be affecting that many people adversely, we don't believe. And what we were going to start out with was, the first day for all teachers was going to be on Wednesday. Now it's just on a Tuesday, August 23rd. So I think that's the best solution we could come up with in this case. Otherwise, we're going into adding Monday, June 11th, which eats into that weekend. I mean, there's just really no great solution on this. I misspoke last month. I said, "Oh, that's easy, I looked at the wrong year." I thought we were ending on a Wednesday, and we were looking to end on a Friday. So this, to me, seems the best solution available. And then the other reason that people thought it would be better is that childcare won't be available on January 2nd in a lot of places because it's a holiday. And so we'd be looking to, you know, put a lot of hardship on people on a couple of different days that way, so this seemed to be the kindest switch that we could make, so. The long and the short of it is, no school Monday, January 2nd, start of school, or Friday, August 26th.
Okay. Any questions? All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I need to get back up to the agenda, give me a minute. Thank you. Passable action as a result of executive session? None. Consent agenda?
I move to approve the following items on the consent agenda, as you can see on your television screen.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Kim Burke?
Yes.
Mary Jane Brady?
Yes.
Eric Wagner?
Yes.
Al Fifeos?
Yes.
Corinne Torkelson?
Yes.
Terry Carney?
Yes.
Okay.
New business, Reduction in Force Notices.
Just wanted to put that on there to have people's radar up that next month, we will more than likely have a couple of Reduction in Force notices for teachers' aides. We added a couple of positions this year due to some enrollment changes in kindergarten and things of that sort. And when we hired these positions, they were told these were subject to review at the end of the year. Nothing to do with the people's performance, it's just that this is typical to issue some reductions in force to make sure we protect the district in the event that we don't need those positions for next year. So next month, we will probably, depending on some things that are out of our control, but we'll probably be issuing one or two. So that's all.
Okay. Any other new business? Okay. Old business? None? Okay. Adjournment? Oh.
Oh, we didn't adjourn yet. No one moved.
No, no, just on the old business, I know that, Jane, just update on East School. I know you're going, you're doing some bids for asbestos removal and...
Yes, as a matter of fact, asbestos bids are due on February 5th, I believe, or the 4th. It's a Friday. I don't have the calendar in front of me. Most likely because we have a negotiations session or team meeting set for February 8th, I'll be asking the board to have a special meeting, so we would need one more board member to approve those bids, so then we can meet the two-week posting notice and get the abatement started. The abatement will take approximately two weeks to complete. It's going to be a pretty easy job. Then as far as the demo work for East School, we actually did meet with the Village today to review utilities and things like that. We are going to get those bid documents on the street February 10th, I believe. And so we'll be accepting those bids early March and asking the board to approve the bids at the March Board meeting, and work can get started shortly thereafter.
Okay, terrific. Thank you for the update.
No, I would like to add, the bid documents will specify to the general contractor that that project is to be completed, cleaned up, everything smooth sailing by July 4th.
That's great.
And Jane, does weather impact that coming down? Once we've abated the asbestos, can they pretty much get started?
Yeah, once they, they go, weather really won't have a huge impact because it's going to be pretty much demo work, a site work could be impacted, certainly.
But bringing, bringing the building down pretty much can proceed.
Like a torrential downpour or something, you're probably not going to have too much.
Hey, could we save money and make a science project out of demoing the...
First math, maybe.
Math, there we go.
How big does it take to blow up?
Taking the shoe, like, make something a little bit bigger and...
Adjournment. I move, we adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.[1679.14]